All right, good evening, everybody. For the record, it is 5:15 PM on Thursday, July 28, 2016. I'll call the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council to order. The first -- oh, are we doing a call-in? Okay, I knew that.
What are we going to call him?
So we'll wait before Keith gets on the phone and then we'll...
Hello, this is Keith.
Hi, Keith. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. We're getting ready to do the flag salute.
Okay.
Councilmember Poyer is going to lead us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Poyer. And for the record, Councilmember Bailey is the only one absent. And Councilmember Huffaker is on the phone with us this evening. First item on tonight's agenda would be the consent items.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent items consisting of this evening's agenda, the vouchers, and the minutes from our previous meetings.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Markhart, to adopt this evening's consent items as presented in your council packet. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item would be citizens' comment if any member of the audience would wish to address the council. I've asked you to come up and I'd give you three or four minutes to address the council. Any item? Seeing no takers, we will move on to a presentation by the Wenatchee Downtown Association. I see Steph and Linda and the group here.
You're not done yet, Charlotte.
We brought you a little bit of downtown because you know...
I recognize those bags.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like library.
It's de minimis. It's very cute, a water bottle and... crunty. It's de minimis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is one of the favorite things I do every year because we get to talk a little bit about last year and where we're at this year and where we're going in your great historic downtown Wenatchee. I have Steph Grubich with me. She is my board president and Charlotte Brown, and she's my promotion and special events director. To start out with, she had a little announcement on Monday. Charlotte's leaving us on the 12th of this of August. She's been with us two and a half years and her contribution as far as her graphics design degree has been amazing. So what you see in our logos is all Charlotte, and she has truly done what we needed, and she gave us a facelift. And she is going to pursue her passion in graphics design, and she was hired by Confluence Health. So her new boss isn't far from where she is right now. So it's kind of all in the family. But it's a good move for her, and we started a job search this week. I have 15 in a matter of three and a half days. And I was amazed about the amount of out-of-town people who are looking to move here. And this is a small nonprofit job, okay? And they want to relocate here. It was fascinating that they picked this up and we're, you know, we are getting that kind of interest. So we're pursuing on that. A couple of things last year where you saw our report in your packet and I put another one in your bag. A couple of things I'm particularly proud of is our collaboration with the city for our lights. What a difference, right? So we paid to paint the poles, which was the first win, and then the lights. And we didn't know how that would go. And what a positive difference that has made in downtown. So a special thank you to the city for partnering with us. We could have never done it on our own. And we had great... I still am getting donations from the community for the remaining... We are within, I think we're within about $8,000 of totally paying back. So that's really cool for us. So I'm proud of that. At our state conference, we were recognized, our organization for organizational excellence, for that collaboration work with the city, for our collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce, and then our little project we did with the school district of why I love downtown and the banners. So we were recognized for the state for that and also our Meet Me Downtown campaign. So the state recognized us as our organization, and that was pretty cool. You know, you have in your packet, we are about to launch, instead of a mayor's tale because, Mayor, you didn't have to run this year. So we are launching an elected tale. So we're going to elect a doggy president, a doggy vice president, a doggy 12th District Senator and Representative. We're going to also, as the votes come in order, we're going to probably elect a county commissioner, maybe even a governor. We're not sure about that. And we're going to have a presidential candidate or past president look-alike contest. I've seen a couple of Donald Trumps walking around. So we are going to let people nominate their dog. So that opens on Monday, and we file for two weeks, and then we start voting. A dollar a vote. As you know, last year we raised about 8,000, I think it was 8,400? Yep. That all went to the Humane Society. So we're going to collaborate with the Humane Society again, and that's where you're going to be able to vote, early and often, at the Humane Society and also Club Pet and Firehouse Pet Shop. So it's going to be really fun. We will once again name our winners at our 15th Annual Harvest Festival in September. So we're looking forward to that. The other thing in your bag is a glass from our Holiday Open House and Wine Walk. We are doing this this year with the Chamber on our own. We did an ale trail this past Father's Day weekend, which was really fun, and we did it on our own with the Chamber. And we're also doing the Wine Walk in November. And also in there, I have a little page for you. I attended a workshop, and it really gave us a chance to, what do we love about what we do in our community? So the wordle in there is the things about this job and the things about our community that we love. So I put that in there, too. And we're just plugging away. Again, we'll have a new Charlotte sometime in August, and we are looking forward to the challenges for BNO tax credit incentive program next year. We were unsuccessful, the state was, of getting the cap raised. There are 34 communities right now eligible for that $1.5 million. So dialing for dollars, as I call it, will start at midnight on the first. We are putting legislation before the legislature this year to move that filing period. Deanne will be really happy to hear this. We're trying to move that filing period to the first working day of the year instead of this year, a Sunday. The other thing we're doing is, as an organization, I personally was pretty passionate about of the 34, many of these communities are not following the true Main Street approach, are not being accountable for the four working committees, all the things we're supposed to do. But there was no rules behind the RCW for this legislation. So we are in the last process of rule writing. If you've ever done rule writing for the state, it's not fun. And so the last hearing is next week. I'll be going to in Ellensburg, and then there will be rules. And if these communities, then, the Department of Archaeology, who oversees this program, can keep people from being able to get this money, it will even the playing field because we work really hard. We are only one of 13 that are both state and nationally accredited Main Street programs. We work really hard to follow all the rules and do it right, and it's only fair that everybody do that, too. One more thing really quick. If you happen to go down a rondo, you will see the parklet in front of McGlynn's going up as we speak. It was just about overnight. My phone started ringing last night going, "It's happening." So Michael is getting final approval from Liquor Control. That thing is up. So take a look. It is pretty cool. And you know, what people said, you know, they leveled out, right? They leveled out the sidewalk. So it's pretty, it is pretty intricate.
I won't say this, but I'm going to say it anyhow. He has his permit, and I'm inviting anybody who wants to go have the inaugural first beer on the parklet after tonight's meeting.
Yes. He wasn't sure if he'd have it by today, so he did.
It is officially open.
So just to let you know, my summer Main Street meeting was in Port Townsend last week, and we did something that I think would be really fun to do here. I'm sorry, Matt, but it's called a walking audit. And you walk your streets. Are they walkable? What's your walking audit? And they talk about a street diet. And what is happening on a rondo is really a street diet. You move those four lanes down, right? Angle parking. What he's doing on a rondo is part of what they call a street diet. And the future is more walkable, slowing, calming. She probably said parklets and streetlets 10 times on our walking audit, and it was really fun to have this conversation. We have a very walkable street right now, but everybody is dealing with making it more bike-friendly, all those things that we need to do in downtown. But we are working hard, and we will continue to work hard. Good things happen in downtown. So does anybody have a question for us?
How do you get your dog registered?
So it is $10. You can register at Firehouse Pet. We can email you one. You can get them online, Firehouse Pet, Humane Society. Register your pet, and we want a picture, and we want your doggy's good habits and bad habits. We need to be informed voters, and we want to know their toy, right? We have a sitting, am I thinking Berksen Rec Director? What is Jasmine?
I think she's Berksen Recreation Director.
I think so, too. So we won't let those this year, but we're going to do our best to get a good present in Wenatchee.
Can you tell me again the week and the Saturday of the Harvest Festival?
Harvest Festival is always the third Saturday, which will be 17.
17. Thank you.
So, question, is Jasmine eligible to run against?
Absolutely.
She'll be there.
And thank you, Mayor, for mentioning that. We're going back to basics. It's the 15th. And so we are not, we are nicely not taking commercial booths. We're going to have foods. We're going to have a candidate's corner, and we're asking if the candidates want to come in and stump to bring some family fun-friendly event for kids and families. And we're asking people, if they do come down, like, and they are more of a commercial type of booth, that there is something free for the kids, something family, much more. We're going back to the basics. We're going to, I have the apples donated. I'm just trying to get there with the Health Department. But we want you to be able to taste Gala and Fujis and Pink Ladies and figure out why they taste different. We're going to do a little bit more harvest stuff. And we changed the name for the Taste of the Harvest because people thought you were going to get a taste of Seattle. A little disappointed when there was a bunch of food, so we're calling it the Downtown Harvest Festival. It's the 15th annual. Music in the plaza from 10 until 5. Street closure, and a rondo remains open, and second remains open, east-west.
Excellent.
Okay?
It's going to be fun.
It's going to be fun.
You folks are doing an amazing job.
We try hard. Thank you.
Thank you, because it makes a big difference.
And I'll be back to see you in about three weeks, parking study, right? Or three, a month, and I guess it's the second, the first meeting in September, maybe parking study. And thank you, Mayor and Mark, for attending those. You know much more about parking than you ever thought you would in your entire life right now, getting parking study stuff. But thank you, Mayor, for coming, and it's going to be really good. Good data we're getting from the parking studies, so. Cool.
Great, thanks, ladies.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right. Action items. We have just a few this evening. The first would be regarding dinner requirements in event of an emergency. Allison Williams.
I'm actually coming with...
And Matt and Cliff.
Matt and Cliff.
Yeah.
This was at their request, and so Allison Williams, Executive Services Director. And so since it was on behalf of a couple of departments, we wanted to have this resolution as a part of our record that would give authority for utilizing the state law regarding the emergency bidding in the case of needing to award a contract in the case of an emergency. Anything further that you guys want to add?
Yeah, so what this would give us would just be the authority to enter into a contract if there's an emergency. In the past, we've pretty much had to go beyond our director rights and enter into contracts, say there's a water main that bursts, and it's something that our crews can do, and we typically call contractors to do that. We'll just go do it and then come and ask for forgiveness later. Well, this will just kind of make it so we have the authority to do that and have a certain time to enter it into record. One example could have even been the Sleepy Hollow Fire hydro seeding project that we did last fall, where we had to wait a couple of weeks to go to council to get approval to do that project for that slope stabilization, where we could have just, you know, saved that couple of weeks and got that contract out sooner, which, well, we ended up, it worked good anyways, but it could have bought us a couple, a little bit of time.
And this provides us with a process whereby we go through and do that work and then file a record with the city clerk, so we're on record for that.
So it wouldn't necessarily come back to the council to let us know?
Right. We would report back, but the legal process is to file a record with the city clerk. And the resolution basically restates state law in this regard.
Does it make sense to add something to the resolution requiring at least a report back to the council?
We certainly could do that. We could add that.
I mean, at least let you know how many times we're using our emergency.
Yes.
We only use it, what, once or twice a year, maybe?
Yeah.
And I, yeah, I don't disagree with it.
If I had a question in the cloud, it would be much more global, and that is that the city does not really have an ethics policy. And I believe that we need one to cover a wide range of issues such as leaving employment or leaving council and what you do and that. And we're a large enough community that there are, I guess where I'm getting at, is making sure that directors are not put in a position where, when they're exercising their emergency authorities, that it's a relative, you know, it's that nepotism sort of, or at least the appearance of nepotism. That concerns me. This doesn't concern me, but I think more globally, I would like in time to see a city ethics policy that would cover even little things like the swag that we just received from the Downtown Association. Is that okay or is that not? Something different than our public disclosure guidelines? That's all.
Right. And we do handle a number of those things within our employee handbook. There is that policy within there, but refreshing that and adding to that would be...
Well, and like you said, I think that it covers city officers, too, that are not covered by the personnel.
So maybe what we should do is this, then. Let's just make it a policy of the staff to report back to the council every time we use the emergency thing for a while, just to see how many times we're using it and what kinds of things we're using it for, in case they want to revise this or take it away from us.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's Sunday afternoon and a certain irrigation company's pipe bursts at the intersection of Wenatchee Avenue and Miller, I don't want to wait two, three weeks for council action.
We wouldn't anyway, and we would just go do it.
Yeah, exactly. And that's what I'm talking about.
Want to have the backing.
And time-wise, to report back, two weeks?
Yeah, within the month.
Within the month?
Yeah.
Well, we have to...
That was my only concern with it is just the fact that you're leaving it up to some interpretation of what an emergency is and what it fits in. So it definitely needs a little bit of oversight. So I think if we have that, should be great.
And the state law, again, where, and it's restated in the resolution, does define the emergency. But bringing it back for practical application and understanding how it's working.
Yes, if there is no competitive bidding, that makes sense. Okay.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2016-37, authorizing city department directors and/or the mayor to waive competitive bidding requirements in award contracts in event of an emergency with the understanding of reporting back to the city council with a timely manner.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Kula, to adopt Resolution 2016-37, as shown in your council packet, with the addition of staff reporting back to council within a reasonable amount of time when we use the emergency provisions. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Jeremy Hoover and Matt Leonard. We're going to do a little stormwater improvement project. You guys that don't know Jeremy, he's our utilities engineer.
Hello?
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jeremy Hoover. I'm the new senior engineer with Utilities Public Works. I'm here to request that the city council authorize the mayor to negotiate with Forest Green and Associates for design of the improvements at Ringgold between 5th and 7th over to Princeton to relocate a portion of the city's storm sewer system and turn the canyon drains in that area into a pipeline under the roadway.
I had a question about that. If we, once we put that into a pipe all the way to Princeton, is it necessary to divert the water coming off the college to the, over to 9th Street?
Since we're going to be going through that corridor anyway, the idea is to get all of the public water out of the canyon drain systems to the extent possible. The canyon drains are intended to just take the drainage that's coming off of the mountains, not necessarily the urban stormwater system. Keeping the two separate gives additional capacity to the canyon drain systems, which are currently in need of repair and do not have adequate capacity to meet the ultimate needs of the system. That's why we're wanting to separate out the stormwater.
I was just wondering if there was any advantage of having that water continue down there to help flush sediment or whatever else might be in there when the canyon drains aren't running very heavy.
The amount of water...
I'll trust your judgment.
The amount of water that that would be putting into it would not do a whole lot of flushing, per se. It's just adding additional capacity and creating more of a tailwater effect, basically decreasing the amount of capacity in the canyon drain systems downstream.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we end up with essentially two parallel pipes in Ringgold, one going all the way to 9th, and then the other one taking a right-hand turn on 7th.
Correct. There's two possibilities. One would be that the water from the college parallels the pipe, the new canyon drains pipe, and then continues directly north, like you mentioned. Or we may make it take a right-hand turn, follow the canyon drain lines down to Princeton, and then north up to 9th Street to an existing catch basin system there. That's part of the analysis that Forest Green is going to need to perform. It may very well be that it makes more sense to parallel the entire canyon drain system and then take it north in Princeton. We'll see what their numbers come out at.
So speculate a little bit without a design. Is it likely or unlikely that we'd be doing a total reconstruction of Ringgold by running this?
I do not anticipate repaving the entire street, no.
And most likely, we already have adequate rights-of-way to locate our lines, that we're not going to be having to acquire additional right-of-way?
We have all the right-of-way we need. The only thing that might come up would be a temporary construction easement at the outlet of the new canyon drain systems, depending on whether the property owner would like us to actually pipe that section between the existing culverts that go under Ringgold and the existing Ringgold canyon drain system that goes across his property. It would make sense to do so because otherwise, we're going to have a pipe system to an open ditch to a pipe system and, you know...
Yeah.
And we've talked about it on the new Public Works Committee, which has been great, is that, obviously, we've had issues with the canyon drains this last year in particular. You know, the city needs to do what it can. This is one of the, really, the toughest areas they had in terms of lots of flooding. And that ditch, that red line that runs in there is actually above the grade of the houses. And it's a tough area to get into, and if we wanted to fix the ditch, and so staff said, well, we've got some money in our stormwater fund, let's start where we can get the opportunity to do something, let's start kind of nickelin' away at it. So this is one of the spots we thought might be the best to kind of jump on and do a smaller project. So that's kind of the reason we ended up with this spot.
Is there, is there still a possibility at the top where it begins of things plugging it up and...
Well, there's always going to be some kind of sediment going through the system. There's no real way of keeping that from happening absent putting in a bunch of detention basins upstream from there. So we will end up having to clean the system out. In this situation, putting everything into a pipe, that allows us to go in and do maintenance in the right-of-way without having to get onto private property, go through trees, go through ditches that aren't really accessible. So in terms of maintenance, it will make it easier for us to maintain that system in that area.
So they get in with a vector waste truck and they suck all the duck out of the bottom of those things.
And so the water that's running there now, now that we don't have the rainfall, I assume is irrigation overflow and over-irrigation that's coming down through there.
I'm sure there's irrigation. There's stuff from people washing their cars that ends up in there because it's all a combined system.
Yeah.
It's kind of the idea. Eventually, we'll try to get everything off of there, and the nuisance flows won't be ending up in the canyon drain system.
Is there some thought this gets done before next year's runoff?
Right now, it's going to be tight. It really depends on how much bidding we can get done at the beginning of next year and how quick we can get it out. I'm not anticipating the design process to take very long. It kind of depends on when we start getting the runoff. If we have a really late thaw, we might be able to get it without the runoff being a problem. Tough to say.
All right. Any other questions for Jeremy? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for city council to authorize the mayor to negotiate with Forest Green and Associates Incorporated for Design Services for the Ringgold Street Stormwater Improvements, Project Number 1618, and further authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Harold and a second by Councilmember Sparza to authorize the mayor to negotiate with Forest Green and Associates for Design Services for the Ringgold Stormwater Project. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jeremy. Thank you. Mr. Leonard, Fourth Amendment for the Yakima Nation on our South Wenatchee facility.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So what we have tonight is a commercial sublease of the South Wenatchee Avenue, South Wenatchee Public Works South Yards, sorry. So this is a facility that we subleased from GBI Holdings, which is Goodfellow Brothers. That expires, our current lease expires with them on January 31st, 2017. So we're in the process of relocating to the new Vector Waste facility. And the Yakima Nations has been, since 2009, has been subleasing their office building that's on that property from us. So the current sublease expired in February or in May, I guess. And so this is just giving it, so the new termination date would be January 15th. So we'd have 15 days to make sure that they moved out and to get it ready to turn back to Goodfellow Brothers on January 31st.
Is that when our lease with Goodfellow Brothers runs?
Yeah, so we have a lot to do before then. We have to move all of our stuff. We have to, we're going to build a new storage shed, so we need to get busy.
So we're operating, they're operating without a lease now, so is that what you said?
Yeah.
So I'm just curious, why do you have to do so?
So we can, so they can pay us?
So they haven't been paying us since May?
No.
Oh, okay. But they're going to be paying us.
Yeah, so they, I mean, they want to pay us.
Yeah, I know, okay.
Yeah, I looked at the last one, and it was a year expired, so I'm like, hey.
Not doing horrible. It'll be nice to get off the Goodfellow lease property, too, for us, and get onto the Vector Waste facility and get onto our own property.
For your honor, I make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the Fourth Amendment to the commercial sublease agreement for the property located at 1885 South Wenatchee Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Markhart, to authorize the mayor's signature on the Fourth Amendment with the sublease for the South Wenatchee Avenue property. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Fire code amendments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me. So I am here tonight to request city council adopt ordinance 2016-20 relating to the adoption of the 2015 International Fire Code. As you recall, I was here about a month ago for the building code adoption, and so we finished up on the fire code. There are some amendments that we've made to it and some deletions from our last code cycle. Do you have any questions on any of those?
I don't have any questions or anything specifically, but, and I think you mentioned this to me before or I heard it walking down the street, that... mentioned this to me before, or I heard it walking down the street, that the new International Building Code plus the Fire Code, by the time you start building some of these larger apartment complexes, it's gonna make these things quite a bit more expensive to build.
Not in the Fire Code. This is sprinklers are the big issue in the Fire Code, probably.
In the building code that we've adopted, there's stuff in that.
The Energy Code.
Energy.
Yes, the Energy Code.
Energy Code, not, not.
And that's a Washington State requirement.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah.
So, this, these changes aren't gonna add additional?
No. In fact, for sprinkler requirements currently in the city Wenatchee, any buildings over 7,500 square feet require a sprinkler system. And you'll notice that that requirement is not in our 2015 Fire Code adoption, that we're just going with what the Fire Code requirements are and the building code requirements are. So, that was a local amendment.
Yeah. And, and if we might, just a little bit on the Energy Code, the reason why is that legislature passed a number of years ago a requirement that the, the state building code, the Energy Code achieve 70%.
70% reduction.
Yeah, 70% reduction in energy use in, for new construction. And so, the rules that are, come out every three years over a, was it over a six, six-year code cycle? Five year?
Every three years, they.
But they need to get the 70%, like, in a 15, 18-year period.
Yeah, from the, it's, it's a 70% increase from the 2006 code to 2030.
So, every, the, the curve goes up on the, on the energy savings that has to be achieved. And so, all the low-hanging fruit was picked in the first two code cycles. The extra insulation, glazing on windows and things like that. Now, it's all sorts of stuff.
It's gonna get tough. Heat recovery, hot water heaters, heat pump, hot water heaters.
Metering of HVAC equipment to see how it's functioning.
It was about, they have to maintain a, a increase in conservation of about 15% every code cycle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what it was. Okay.
And that's the cost.
Mm-hmm. Well, heat pump water heaters, $1,500.
Should've built that house last year. And moved to Montana. Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2016-20, amending Chapter 3.16 of the Wenatchee City Code pertaining to the Fire Code.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kulas, second by Councilmember Poyer, to adopt ordinance 2016-20, amending Chapter 3.16 of the Wenatchee City Code regarding the Fire Code update. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Cliff. Mayor's report. I lost my agenda where I wrote down the four or five things I was gonna talk about, but let's see how my memory works. Tuesday night is National Night Out at Memorial Park at what time?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. So, hopefully, you can all attend and go down and support our police and firefighters. It's always a great night down at the park and have something to eat. So, I will, I will be there for that. We did have a meeting last night on annexation, the kind of the outreach on the island annexation. Councilmember Markhart was there, a number of our staff. You know, I, I think it went okay. I think it's difficult when you try to tell people who's gonna govern them. I think that overall is sometimes a tough sell. I, I think we did the best we could. We do have some other information that we need to provide to some of the folks that got a bit confused over when they would be required to hook up to a sewer line, but I think we're gonna work on that. So, yeah, I think we did the best we could. It wasn't perfect. I will tell you, as I told the group, I said that, first thing I told them all is I know none of you voted for me. And, second thing I told them, and it was true, is I think there was eight or nine staff people, and there might have been 90 community members. And so, anytime you get more community members and staff, you've, you've, you've hit something. So, I told them it was the first time in four and a half years as mayor that there was actually more community members and staff. So, a couple of folks were pretty opinionated and let me know in front of the group, and but we, we survived. What else is on my list? There was a few other things, I know. I know the Our Value What's Next Think Tank is still meeting every other Thursday. We dealt last week with Confluence Parkway and what that would mean in terms of a game changer, and then this idea of trying to do more things collaboratively, combining cities, school districts, ports, that kind of stuff. So, both of those conversations went well. I don't know where it's all gonna go, but I continue to attend those meetings every other, every other Monday night. Allison, what else is on my list? There was more. Oh, we have our.
Retreat.
Retreat next week.
There's a draft agenda.
And you've seen the agenda. So, I guess two questions. First is, what time should we start? And second is, is it gonna take us long enough that we should have dinner provided and take a little 15-minute break during the retreat? So, you've got your, I don't know if that's a two-hour agenda report, that if we started at 5:15, we could be done by 7:30, or if you, what you guys are thinking. We can certainly provide pizza and something to eat for a break. We can start earlier if you want to start earlier.
Mayor, I mentioned before, earlier, that I have no, I think I'm the only city council person who won't be there.
Okay.
You think you're what?
I'm the only city council person who won't be there.
Right.
I mentioned that, I'm up to.
Yeah, I knew you were gonna be gone.
Yeah.
So, what are you guys thinking? Any thoughts on where the other?
I'm flexible.
I'm pretty flexible.
Me, too.
Me, too.
Well, then, why don't we just start at our normal starting time, 5:15, and we'll plan on having some pizzas brought in around 6:30 or something, and that'll give us a time to either break or however we want to do that. Does that work, Tammy and Allison?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Great.
So, 5:15, and we'll do that. Come on, Allison, there was more on my list.
You got to those things.
Okay.
You got to your four things.
Yeah. Council members, anything on your neck of the woods?
I do have a request. I'm gonna, I mentioned to you that I was looking at taking a new job, and I have taken that new job. And it's gonna put a little bit of crunch on some of my time. And I'm wondering if I can get somebody to be an alternate for Sha'lan Douglas Health. They meet once a month on Monday. I think it's the third Monday. I'll be able to make it, I think, for August 15th. I'm pretty sure September 19th, I will not be able to attend, and was hoping maybe we could have an alternate for that.
What time do they meet?
Four.
Three to four.
So, I, I have PFD board meetings on that same Monday every month at four, so I cannot do that.
Yeah. Why don't we just throw that in the mix next week to talk about?
Okay. Just, I, I just thought I'd throw it out tonight, so you can think about it, see what worked for anybody.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll discuss that and deal with that next Thursday at the retreat.
Yeah. And Keith can tell us a little bit more about what the board's been doing.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, perfect. Anything else? Some of the council stuff that you've been doing, meetings? I do enjoy the, we had finance committee meeting today. That always does well, and I'm enjoying the Public Works Committee meetings as well. Hopefully, those have been informative to Ruth and Mike and Jim. So, I think they've been great.
And Steve Crown has some great ideas about public safety. He's, he's kind of framing out some things for that committee in terms of reporting and bringing questions forward and some data presentations. So, I think that'll be great.
When's our next meeting?
August, the third Thursday in August at 3:30.
For a meeting, Public Safety's meeting every other month.
Right.
Okay. So, if there's no other business, we'll see you next Thursday, unless you want to go have a beer with me in the new parklet, park, parklet? Have a glint.
Treatery.
Treatery.